Thank you, everyone. Welcome to the January 17th, 2023 zoning committee meeting. We will be holding the hybrid, a hybrid public meeting, which enables remote electronic participation as legally authorized by Dakota, Virginia, per the planning commission's electronic meeting policy adopted on July 7th, 2022. Members of the ZOCO are participating both here in person and virtually, although no, right? I think you're all in person tonight amongst commissioners. Okay. And then we have public. Okay. Let's see. At this time, I'd like to orient everyone to our hybrid environment and cover a few specifics about how tonight's meeting will run. Members of the public may attend the meeting here in person or electronically by using the Microsoft Teams link provided on the ZOCO webpage, the county's event calendar, and the email notification sent to ZOCO email subscribers. Additionally, there's a dial-in phone option for those who wish to use it. For our planning commissioners joining virtually, there are none. For our virtual attendees using Microsoft Teams, please turn off your video feed and keep your microphones muted as you enter the meeting and during our meeting. So everyone's adhering to that. Microsoft Teams chat will only be used to provide instruction for virtual attendees on how to register for public comment and to field general questions about Microsoft Teams. The Teams chat will not otherwise be monitored by staff or the planning commission during the meeting, and will be used to collect feedback. Unlike planning commissions' regular meetings, the ZOCO agenda items are not public hearings. Therefore, public comments at the ZOCO chair's discretion after the committee discussion has concluded. Public comments can be provided by people attending in person and virtually. For in-person attendees who wish to provide public comment this evening, you may indicate on the meeting's sign-in sheet that you would like to provide public comment. For virtual attendees who wish to provide public comment this evening, you may indicate in the Teams chat that you would like to provide public comment, and your name will be added to the list of speakers. And there will be public comments tonight, so if anyone wishes to sign up, please do so. As a reminder, you always have the option to provide written comments via the link and the provided in Teams chat on this, and the link is provided in the Teams chat and on the ZOCO website. All written comments, whether in paper or online, will be shared with the planning commission and posted to the ZOCO page for public viewing. All comments received as of noon today have already been shared with ZOCO. I will call for speakers at the end of the meeting, and I will ask Mr. Rogers to let me know if we have virtual attendees who would like to provide comment. Mr. Rogers will acknowledge speakers in the Teams chat. Please indicate in that chat what you'd like to provide comment, and your name will be added to the list of speakers. Members of the public attending virtually will speak first, followed by in-person attendees. When virtual attendees are called upon to speak, you must unmute yourself by clicking the microphone icon that is located on your meeting command bar. Moderator does not have the ability to unmute you. Lastly, this is a public forum. Today's meeting will be recorded and posted to the county website. All information associated with today's meeting, whether written or spoken, is subject to the Freedom of Information Act requirements. Okay, I think that's it. So now let's do a round of introductions. We'll start now on the left. So I am Lee Starlee of the Planning Commission, and...
I'm Jim Lantelme, member of the Planning Commission.
Elizabeth Garrett, Planning Commission.
Nick Rogers, Community Planning, Housing and Development.
Irina Law, Safety Department of Parks and Recreation.
Eileen McQuist, Department of Environmental Services.
Cliff Hogan, I'm with the Department of Community Housing and Development.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, we have a couple of staff who joined us virtually. Liz, do you want to unmute yourself and give a brief introduction?
Yes, my name is Elizabeth Thurber, and I'm with the Department of Environmental Services, the Office of Sustainability and Environmental Management, and I'm the Stormwater Infrastructure Program Manager.
And then I see Walter there as well.
Walter, you're muted.
Walter, I can't hear you unfortunately.
Sorry. Walter Gonzalez of the Department of Parks and Recreation, working with the Park Development Division as a planner on this plan.
That's the only staff I see. Thank you. All right. Ms. Lance Gester, would you mind shutting off your camera? Thank you. With that, I'll turn it over to staff to do their presentation. Yep. So we're going to start the agenda off tonight with a short summary and presentation from Mr. Hogan. He has a series of text amendments that he's in the beginning stages of working on, and this is a bit of a, is somewhat unique, although it's on the work plan. We have a set of amendments that have, that we've known about for years, and I think Cliff is going to hint at that a little bit, that are, that are more, not necessarily policy-oriented, more technical and administrative in nature. We've sort of finally harnessed the forces to do so, and we wanted to give ZOCO an introduction and a preview of what will be to come later in the year, and it gives Cliff some face time with some of our planning commissioners. And so just very quick, no nonsense, and, and I guess I'll just turn things over to you, Cliff.
As Nick said, I'm Cliff Hogan, I'm with the zoning division. Essentially, like, this is, I guess, way to look at it, it's kind of like a new line of business for amendments, somewhat akin to like the commercial residency amendments that are currently coming through. And the difference, I would say, is that these amendments are, as they say, very technical. Errors in zoning ordinance, they are, in practice, cross-references, there are inconsistencies with external codes and regulations, conflicting regulations, like very technical, that come about, like primarily from administering zoning ordinance, reviewing permits, rendering determinations through meetings with lawyers and developers, and just kind of, these are very small, like very technical, very zoning, kind of almost nerdy, like, you know, like, problems. And so we've been kind of compiling a list of them since, pretty much since the reformat in 2014. And so we're kind of up to, like, we're approaching 60 entries in that log. And again, these are all small, like minor errors. And so we are going to, the zoning division, that is, will be moving these amendments through in the coming year. And we've kind of organized these into four broad categories. There are errors, which are just basic mistakes, these are demonstrably attributable errors that, spelling grammatical cross-references, errors in diagrams and illustrations and other things, so forth. Second category is updates. Again, these are things, like making the zoning ordinance conforming with the Code of Virginia, various plans and policies that the county has in place, or things as simple as like, you know, the renaming of the highway to Langston Boulevard, those references to T Highway in the zoning ordinance that is no longer really relevant. The next category we call corrections. These are kind of like conflicting regulations, or inadvertent policy changes that happened to previous amendments that were unforeseen at the time they went through. And then just for other clarifications about, like, the specific text in the ordinance that makes it easier to interpret and so forth. And then the fourth are what we call deficiencies, and these are amendments that are, like, the regulations are problematic to administer from a practical or an interpretive standpoint. These would potentially have, you know, potential policy implications, like the higher degree than, and I probably shouldn't have started that. Like, the potential, like potential policy impacts of these four categories kind of go out, starting with, like, really no policy impacts for the errors, to like, there's, there could be moderate policy impacts for the deficiencies, so, and, yeah, and I think that's, I mean, I can give you examples of each category, if, I don't know if it's...
I'd be curious to hear an example of a deficiency. I think I understood the others.
Okay. So like a deficiency, and I probably should also add that the, the boundary between, like, the corrections and deficiencies are a little...
Sure, you guys had to start somewhere.
Right. This is more just to conceptualize how we're going to move this bulk of work through, like, the legislative process. And so like, there could be back and forth as far as like when, you know, what's, you know, like, like, we may have it as a correction now, but then when we go to approach it, we could potentially, well, that's more of a deficiency, and, you know, and then these two could also potentially be moved on to other larger amendments that we get for policy studies and so forth. So like, I mean, some of the corrections that are on the list are going to be actually resolved through the commercial, so the commercial residency amendments. So, you know, where there's opportunities to do that, you know, we take that route. But for things that, like, a lot of these things, a lot of the items on the list are, you know, Article 3, which covers all placement, bulk, building height setbacks and all of that. And again, they just don't come up very often, you know, in the broader context, as far as like the site line reviews or these permits, that sort of thing. So, yeah, so, I mean, as far as examples, like, so, an example of a deficiency. So, okay, so we have a section in Article 3 that talks about accessory, detached accessory buildings for one-family dwellings in our district. You basically can have your detached accessory building in required rear side setbacks, but it's contingent upon the size of the building, the height of the building, and the footprint. So if your building is one and a half stories or 25 feet or less, and it has a footprint of six, 600 square feet, various types of you can screw it up. You can have that accessory building up to one foot off of the rear of the lot lines. Then we also have a regulation that says if you have a two-story detached accessory building, you can be 10 feet, two, I'm sorry, two or more stories, you can be 10 feet from the side of your lot lines. But we don't have a category between, for like, so what do we do with one and a half story building that has an 800 square foot, you know? And so right now, it's like, they need to meet the current regulations for buildings and structures, which is, which is the same as for main building. So it's 25 feet from the rear, eight or 10 from the side. So it's, that's kind of an example of a deficiency. And, you know, and this is an artifact of just like, the various amendments that have gone on over the past 60-plus years in, you know, the ordinance. So, if you, so like, a deficiency would be kind of resolving these like conflicts. And so, you know, so if somebody comes in and they, you know, they ask us, well, you know, can I put my detached studio, you know, it's like, you know, it's like, we need to basically tell them, yeah, no, you may be 25 feet from your lot line. It's like, well, but if I have, or they need to change the proposal to, you know, match, you know, what it's doing. So that's an example of a deficiency. And correction would be... So, again, in Article 3, we have a, it's an allowance that says that if you have an encroaching porch that was in existence before November 201976, it cannot be enclosed. So realistically, that's not related to setback apartments, it's more of a nonconformity, so it really should probably be in the Article 16, which is about nonconformities. And then there's also potentially like, do we even need to keep this regulation up? You know, what, so, you know, so that would be kind of the distinction between the two. Like, I guess two examples, so...
Commissioner, do you have something? Did you have a question?
I did, but I didn't want to stop that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, thank you, that's really helpful, Mr. Hogan, thanks.
You mentioned modifications that would make us more aligned with Virginia code. Now, I know for other aspects of Arlington County, Virginia code is less strict than Arlington's code because we want people to do better daycare. For example, we have stricter policies for daycares compared to Virginia. So are we lowering our standards in areas where we might, where people might say, no, actually, we want, or are we raising the standards because Virginia state has like done better with some aspects of zoning than we have, or?
It's more, so, the, I mean, Virginia's a developmental state, Virginia follows developments, which means that, you know, all of our authorities, like, the authority to create a zoning ordinance and endorse it is...
Granted to us.
Granted to us by the state. So the Code of Virginia has like certain regulations that, you know, say like, you need to, if you're going to have a zoning ordinance, you need to allow that to, so, I mean, like, as an example, I guess back in 20, I think it was 2016, the, the, down in recent, they amended the zoning allowances for telecommunications for small cell, well, for both small cell and for like, you know, traditional telecom facilities. And basically, it's said that, you know, localities cannot, like, we can't require a special exception for a telecom facility, which is, which was allowed prior to that. Our current ordinance is, well, except under certain circumstances, like if you're doing a new facility that is over for complete height, you know, some point of trouble, but our current zoning ordinance still is telecom throughout as accessory use, and it requires a kind of portability for it. So for, you know, the past like five, six years, you know, this is how we've been, you know, we've been, you know, following the Code of Virginia, but we really should be updating our, like, our zoning ordinance to reflect that. So that's the kind of like what, I guess, the update category kind of forms into. Again, another one would be the, again, nonconformities, like, there are allowances for, if you're building a structure, you know, just where my force manager, there are, you know, we are required under the Code of Virginia to allow to rebuild, you know, the same nonconformity regulation before that, but there are, I think they have like a regulation, like our current, currently, it's like more than 50% of the building value, which is what the government said back in like 2014, 2015. Now it's just been reduced to just the 50% of the building, so, it's kind of, just, you know, again, putting this into, like, making our ordinance in alignment with what we're required to have.
Because a builder or a developer could sue if we were not following the state code.
Right, I mean...
Fired by Dylan Lotto, to whatever they're saying.
Exactly. I mean, practically speaking, like, you know, I mean, the zoning, the zoning industry will follow what the Code of Virginia, you know, so for the telecom, you know, if somebody were to come and look at our ordinance, and it's like, oh, well, it says here that you need to have a permit, we want to build this telecom facility on top of a building, you know, and, you know, we would just deal with it. But it's just, it just basically is going to, you know, it makes it clearer for everyone. If I'm speaking, it's just, it's, sorry, it's not...
That's good, that's good. Anyone else? Jim, you good?
Yeah, I mean, we go through this exercise almost every year. Maybe we haven't skipped maybe a year or two, but I remember going through this at other meetings in earlier years.
Debbie was better about this when she was in, in my position. We had, it's been harder to find time to fit this type of maintenance work in, and so...
I just remember having these type of sessions at some point when I was, had been on the commission.
And Cliff, you may have been involved in some of that work, in some ways, shape or form with Debbie back in the day.
Yeah, I mean, I would say it's a matter of, you know, like, wouldn't we get enough to get, you know, it's like, there's, I mean, a lot going on, you know, as far as like, you know, changes to policy and zoning ordinance, and so, and again, like, you know, like, when we can fit these corrections in, you know, with other zoning studies and other amendments, then it's great, but, you know, like, some of these, you know, are just, I mean, yeah, it's just like, you know, waiting for like, to match like this square peg, this square hole, this...
It almost strikes me that the first category, where it's clearly a typo, where it's a spelling grammatical error, that should be done administratively, ministerially, that it shouldn't even have to go through a process like this. Since there's so clearly errors, there should be a process where you can just immediately, once a year, bring them to the county board on the consent agenda and say, don't, you know, and not have to go through this. The other categories, I get that they're a little more, yeah, that you really want to have other eyes, is this the same, are you seeing it the same way we're seeing it? So that I understand. But that first group, I don't think really any of us need to see those sort of things. And you should be able to just bring them straight to the county board and say, it's corrections day, here's a whole laundry list of things, and presumably it isn't just the zoning code, there might be other things that everybody can get together and do. But anyway, that's an editorial comment.
Well, and again, as far as like, you know, like, yeah, I mentioned there's like about almost 60 of these in your group, you know, as far as like the category, you know, like, like, almost 20 of them are like errors.
Yeah.
Seven are updates. There's 20 corrections and 11 deficiencies, so, like, as far as like our timeline, we're hoping to, like, it won't be like, we're not going to take any, like, all 20 corrections to where we're, you know, thoughtful about having them, you know, like, like, ones go with like, ones that are just, you know, changes to uses, corrections to uses, you know, do the, or, you know...
Right, but I still think things like corrections, they're so, they're so...
Well, and again, like...
Given how much work, because I know the workload you have is ridiculous, and I'm trying to keep the workload down and the time you're spending on stuff down, and if there's just some way to have those really simple things to just be expressed through, that I think will save a lot of time for everybody, and allow you to be more productive in the things that you really need to be doing.
All right, yeah. This is good feedback. Thanks, Jim. We did talk about this, but, Jim, bring it up. Timmy, you have another question?
You may have answered this before I came in some friendly, but what, what are the next steps to this process?
So we're hoping like the first, the errors batch, and potentially maybe a portion of the updates, if we wanted to, that would be approximately 25 amendments altogether. We're hoping to bring that through as the first batch, and hoping, and the next thing, hoping to take it to the board and, I hope, they're related.
So goes the planning commission met a hearing. We get a presentation, we say, yes, please do fix all those spelling errors and update the highway links and use, okay, that takes 15 minutes, hopefully, of our hearing, and then it goes to the county board, and then it's through.
Now, later ones may be more, we want to, you know, the exact correction, the exact amendment, but again, you know, like, and again, all these, like, are kind of anticipated for that, like, significant policy, if any significant policy impacts, I mean, other than, you know, like, I mean, some of these things, like, we were to interpret to a new ordinance as a sort of, basically, two things that are not, you know, I mean, the policy impact is in alignment with the actual event impacts.
That's good. All right, well, we'll look forward to seeing any more work. I think, is that it? Does that wrap up everything you need to cover?
Yeah, that's...
Thank you, Cliff. You guys feel like you got all your questions covered?
Thank you.
Thanks so much, Cliff. Appreciate it. And we'll look forward to your emails saying you're ready with the first batch.
Yeah, nothing, it'll be the next, that's it.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Cliff.
All right. What's your next item? The next item is the stormwater management zoning study, and it's also your last item. So, Mr. Chair, I'll be our lead presenter on this tonight, but my hope is that we keep it fairly conversational, so there may be times where I'll invite my, my other colleagues to perhaps elaborate or provide some additional examples, or fill in some of the blanks that I may have left for you all, but, you know, this is some work that, that we kicked off in earnest towards the end of last summer in 2022. Again, this is a, this is an item that was on the work plan that Mr. Fusorelli shared with you at your work session about a year ago or so. And, and a lot of this work is, is born, there's, there's a component about this related to stormwater management, and there's, there's a component related to our public spaces. That's the word I usually, usually, we're talking about public parks, but public spaces is a, is a broader umbrella term. But, you know, the story with this really begins with coordination between CPHD and DES on, on the outcomes and the programming that is, is to be coming in, in the near term related to the Flood Resilient Arlington Initiative. And so those, you were all long enough time residents to understand the incredible flooding that's occurred in some of our neighborhoods depicted on the slide here on the right, climate change, increased frequently, frequency of stores, increased intensity of storms, and the response has been the Flood Resilient Arlington Initiative, specifically the second, that second bullet there related to, the first bullet rather, related to the new types and locations for capacity projects. That's what we're really focusing on this evening, so. I'm trying to think of this in a different way. I don't like how it's sharing, so, just bear with me. No, I don't think so. We didn't have any, just, just, I don't know if anyone's, that's just community and stuff. Hang on. So, so there's a couple of different points of policy perspective to, to familiarize the commissioners on. The first was obviously Flood Resilient Arlington. We have this body of work mentioned in our 2014 Stormwater Master Plan in particular. I won't go into great detail, but the relevant strategies we've included on the slide here and in the memo that accompanied our presentation this evening, as well as the Public Space Master Plan. I want to highlight on three, just sort of key bodies of awareness and consideration that has been informing our work. The first is, is the historical positioning, nature, and development of our park system. Arena is, is a, is a much deeper expert on this than me, but a lot of our, our early parks and, and our, our major parks are, were, are and were located in environmentally sensitive areas along stream channels within what we now call floodways, floodplains, and resource protection areas, but we didn't have that vocabulary at the time. So inherently, there, there is a demand for environmental sensitivity with much of our park system, number one. Number two, the population growth. Think of the work that, that you hear consistently from Ms. Hardy and Ms. Garrett in our group. The county continues to grow. With that growth, population growth, there continues to be a demand for, for all sorts of athletic and, and leisure space among others. And then also what we've sort of colloquially termed emerging trends in park design, this is just a way of saying that our public spaces are, we are trying to do more and try to be more multipurpose with our public spaces. So for the basketball users, the pickleball users, the tai chi users, you can see I'm kind of making things up here, the folks who enjoy just natural beauty, the parks are trying to do a lot in smaller spaces, approximately 47% of our parks are two acres or less. And we also have plans to grow the park system by 30 acres over the next, I think, I think in 2019, we said 2030. We're in 2023 already, so, so there is an element of, of space and efficiency that you'll hear tonight. I think Bannaker Park has been the example we've been using internally that illustrates this the most. This is a, an image from the framework plan that shows all of the environmental constraints that went into that, and then layering on top of that, you can see how when we impose the zoning standards such as our 25-foot street setback requirement, you can see how that play equipment, which ideally is trying to be away from four-mile run, it's actually, it ends up getting pushed back a little bit from the street because of the zoning standard. So this is a body of work, this, it's a piece of a body of work that's included in the PSMP action plan. Again, I keep coming back to the CPHD work plan. We, we recognize that there's a lot here, and there's a, there's a piece of this that's here. We are working closely with DPR on phasing additional elements of PSMP implementation into our work. We are working closely with DPR on phasing additional elements of PSMP implementation into our work plan. You, much like the work from Mr. Hogan, you will be seeing more of this coming your way in the next calendar year. So I just wanted to, to make a note of that. What you'll see later on, one of the pieces of feedback that we got was, well, why just this? Where's the rest of it?
Yeah.
And, and we're, we're continuing to work on that. So, um, I'll pause here for any questions or comments, particularly from commissioners, but also from my colleagues.
Um, I do have questions and comments on this, but you might cover them as you go forward.
So I'll keep going?
Keep going.
All right. So, so I'm going to go through these, I'm going to play my best Liz Thurber and, and/or Eileen Winkes impression with the types of facilities that we're talking about here when it comes to stormwater management facilities. The one that comes up the most that we talk about is the underground detention vault. Uh, this could be of various sizes. Commissioner Garen?
I've asked Commissioner to tell me what this is over the last few years because I and didn't know what it was. It's a detention vault.
It's an underground detention vault. That's right.
It's a underground construction.
That's the one in Cardinal School, right?
Yeah.
That's right, that's right. So, so, so the, so the commission, uh, and, and members of the public should know this, this is, and help me out. We're, we're close to being done.
Basically the vaults are done, um, they are re-rating, um, the, they've covered the soil. They'll be installing sod soon. We were waiting for weather, you know, this spring to put the sod in. So that, the sod will go in, um, and, you know, beginning of March. And then, you know, we're just going to be doing some pipe connection work to kind of finish everything off.
And the parking lot on Lexington, that's going to go away. There's just going to be the parking lot, um, uh, on what's the road that cuts down to Westover?
Parking lot, yeah.
Yeah, that's the only one. Because there was like a little temporary parking lot there.
Yep.
Um, that's great. And I mean, is this, like, how will we share this with the public? Because you know, this neighborhood was so badly impacted by the floods a couple of years. So they'd probably be thrilled to know, wow, look, the county is being proactive here.
Yeah, well, we've actually been working with the public very closely through this whole process. Um, you know, obviously to communicate about the project and the construction and all the activities. Um, we did actually have a few of the neighborhood leaders tour the vaults, you know, while all this other construction. Um, and I believe we are, um, the neighborhood is planning a kind of celebratory event, you know, later this year. And so, you know, we'll partner with them as, as much as.
Good job.
As they would like to. I mean, I don't know if a ribbon cutting would be part of that or maybe separate, but, um, but yeah, we definitely, you know, are very excited to have it.
That's pretty cool.
Yes.
We're showing that.
We're going to be talking more about community engagement during the course of our evening.
Are you, is this the first one we're building in the county or are there, is there, I don't think there's any other one in the county, is there at this point?
There are, um, smaller vaults. A lot of them serve sort of a, a single site, um, you know, and, and, yeah.
It's stormwater for like an office.
Yeah, for a smaller, you know, just for that.
I'll tell you something.
No, this is definitely the largest, you know, for a public vault. And, um, I think we haven't gotten final confirmation, but it may even be one of the largest in the mid-Atlantic area. That's what we had heard from, from Storm Trap.
Just one more, what's the longevity on something like this?
Um, I mean, these are really built, Liz can jump in here as well, but, um, you know, these, this type of infrastructure is built, you know, for fifty, seventy years. I mean, it's really, you know.
Don't you clean it out every once in a while?
There is maintenance, yeah, we will have a contractor do maintenance. And that was planned with the vault. There are manholes, um, access manholes on the top and those will, um, you know, they'll be, you know, um, as part of the, the field. But, you know, they'll be able to access that. So we'll have, I don't know exactly the schedule, but they will be doing maintenance.
I was just surprised that the columns are so close together because it's hard, hard, you could get a little truck there or you have a little front loader down there and clear it out, presumably it'd be easier.
Yeah, yeah, I think they'll use like a suction vacuum. You know, we do, we do similar work in the storm drain, um, inlets and things like that. So, yes, he lives.
Hey, Liz.
Hi.
Maintenance questions?
We also have a time lapse photograph on the website of, uh, it's a video of showing the whole construction process.
That's really cool.
Yeah.
Only the park that is above the detention vault or will there also be the school on top?
No, school's built.
The school's done, yeah. This basically is underneath athletic field.
Fields, yeah.
So the fields will be on top. The playground is kind of between this, um, and the school. So the playground is, is, was finished and is open. And that was the important point for this project was we didn't want to delay the school or the playground. So we know that was, you know, obviously a huge project as well.
Yeah, everything's functioning.
I'll tie into the school thing, just, um, an educational sort of opportunity here for the community, you know, anything that we can do. There's a library next door, you know, any sort of, like, there's some fairly interesting graphics, you know, like, there's some big documentation with the construction. Like any sort of signage and opportunity to educate people so they understand that they're standing on a big.
Yeah, well, infrastructure or your food.
Yeah, I was part of the PFRC for the school itself, but one of the reasons the school is so tall was to preserve those fields.
Yeah, okay.
So that worked really well because then it'll enable this to be built. If the school had sprawled around it, it wouldn't have been able to happen.
To piggyback on Leo's comment about the education, also thinking, um, because at one point you were a little girl wondering what you were going to do. Like, I always want our kids in the schools to be thinking broadly like, oh, this is a field I might be interested in going into. Or green infrastructure, that sort of thing.
Yeah.
That's a really, that'd be wonderful if we can include that as well.
Yeah, we do, yeah, we often do, um, signage, you know, for a lot of our projects, but I can talk to, you know, the, our contacts at the school and see if there's something as well. And I think definitely as part of the celebration event, you know, it makes sense.
The signage is great, just the Westover.
Very exciting.
It was right there, I think, on the Saturday, maybe Sunday morning.
Oh, yeah, that's a good point.
Well attended.
Yeah.
This is a good, good commentary, good coverage. You're picking up on sort of the importance of public space. There's some, a lot of comments that have been in alignment with some of the things that we have heard from members of the public at this point. So I'm, I'm very pleased that we're all on, on the same page. So, and, and this is, I, I, and I'll, I'll let Liz and Eileen speak for themselves, but I, I, I get the sense that this is a, a type of facility that is under consideration for other areas. This, this won't be the only one that, that will end up staying.
Exactly.
See, it's probably one, the biggest one though.
Yeah.
The, the others probably won't be quite this big.
What was the other one?
Woodstock Park.
So you mentioned it's one of the biggest on this.
In the mid-Atlantic area, right, Liz? We have heard from the companies.
Right. It's one of the largest spaces, it pre-caps concrete, uh, probably on the mid-Atlantic states, possibly even the east coast. And, uh, you know, Arlington, we are looking at other sites and other watersheds, but probably none of them will be quite as large as this one. And, you know, the truth is, you're not, you can't see it now, even now, it's pretty much buried. You don't, you don't see anything except the manholes right now. So people won't know, they'll have a baseball field on top, they aren't really going to know it's there.
Chris Peterson?
Well, I was just going to say, you know, Arlington does a lot of innovative things. We try to stay ahead of things. Um, you know, we are trying to be really ambitious with our community energy plan. And so I'm, I'm hoping that, you know, universities that might study this sort of stuff would be looking at Arlington as a case study. So I don't know how that, you know, makes it into academia. I'm sure Karen might know.
They need to write it up. Because it's pending magazine.
Write it up, civic pride.
Write a paper.
It's a real opportunity.
Yeah. And we may look for, yeah, have any potential, um, you know, awards or anything like that. And these might be some of the worst.
I realize this.
Yeah.
All right, sorry. No, 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 like I said, good, good conversation. I did, I said conversational and, and I'm getting exactly what I asked for. So, so, um, the underground detention vaults are not the only facility that DES is, is considering. The other, there are several others, including various types of overland relief measures, uh, providing, um, safe and semi-channelized, um, spaces above ground in, in critical flood conditions for, for if the, the, the pipe system gets inundated, the water can flow somewhere. Commissioner Lee, tell me.
These are really good. What I want to know is, is there a way to have overland relief measures that the land could also be used when it's not flooding for recreation purposes? I mean, more than just having a path along.
Sure.
You know, is there a way we could have a very simple playground or have a bocce court? Or, you know, things like that? Could that be part of the overland relief? And the reason I'm asking is that this is a, right now, fairly controversial area of the plan length to Boulevard, vice versa run.
Yeah.
And we're trying to create a situation where we can have overland relief at that intersection, but it would be lot consolidation and incentive to do that because it's private property, county's not going to take it. So how do we incentivize the private sector to allow something like this on its property? You know, this lot, but could it be done that it isn't simply overland relief? It also will be embodying park space, usable park space.
What about the park by Westover that seems to have been designed to accommodate overflow water? Do you know what the name of that one is? It's behind the school, maybe a block or two.
Yeah, I know which one you're talking about, I'm trying to think of the name of it.
And it's, um, it's got a, like, almost looks like a bi-retentionary built around the play area.
Yeah.
You talking about what's, uh, Takahoe?
Um.
Um, it's, um, it's off of Lexington and it's north of Cardinal Elementary School. It's a small park, very limited working, and, but it does back up to an area that looks similar to these, like the drainage channels from the low lying area.
Parkhurst, I read the park.
Parkhurst, yeah.
Parkhurst, maybe, yeah.
We actually looked at Parkhurst. Yeah, there were too many trees that would be impacted, so, you know, we didn't really spend a lot of time on Parkhurst.
No, um, Mr. saying was, I wonder if that's a bit of a model for, Commissioner, let me tell me suggesting, because that playground seems to have been designed, it's been years since I've been there, but it's got some low lying areas where water is meant to overflow and they're even around the play equipment.
Right, so the plan would be to try to dual use a lot of these open spaces, but you do have to worry about, um, you know, structures and things, we do worry about fences, things that debris could get hung up on. Um, but the plan is to make some of these overland flow paths more than one use.
Right, that's why something like a bocce court doesn't need a fence around it, you know?
Right, there's, we looked at, we've been kicking around a lot of different ideas. And, uh, eventually when we, when we acquire some, when we have enough space like that, we, we, we would engage a consultant to help us come up with a good plan.
Chris Peterson?
Just a quick follow-up to what, um, my colleagues were mentioning. Do you all study what other countries are doing in this area? And I say this because I lived in Singapore for a few years. They have the monsoons and they're also a, a very densely packed area on a very small amount of land. And so I wonder if there's any lessons that we could learn from a country that's similar to our county and then that has been dealing with massive amounts of rain seasonally for, you know.
Ever.
Yeah, since hundreds of years. I mean, they've only been developing as a country for, you know, seven years, but.
I wish we had.
So I think when, after we had the floods in two thousand nineteen, um, we did do, uh, some studies. The manager asked us to come up with some ideas and, and we, we kind of all brainstormed. And then I know that Demetra McBride has just come back from Barcelona. So I would say, yes, we look at what goes on in the rest of the world and also the rest of the, you know, the rest of the country for sure.
Um, this is kind of for like Arena. I get concerned whenever it looks like we're looking at anything that's open space as vacant or undeveloped when people actually do use it. So I hear what you're saying about using the space, but, you know, I went for a walk behind Gulf Branch yesterday. And, you know, if you walk all the way up the hill, there's that big, you know, area and that was meant to be overflow for flooding. So, has, I, it looks like that's sort of come up in the comments. Uh, do we, do we have a plan to compensate the loss of this space if it's been de facto park or it's identified as park space, but it gets used in a way that people can't use it anymore?
I, I think the initial, I think the initial response that we had in, to that very question in our virtual public meeting, however satisfying it may be, was that oftentimes these are, it's, it's hard to really draw conclusions park-wide, system-wide, county-wide. Oftentimes it's, it's what are the, the individual conditions at the site? What are the opportunities that are there for, for, for tree save, to use areas that have already been disturbed? It, it's hard to, we're keeping all these things in mind, but it's hard to do all of these things on every individual site. I would, I would turn things over to Arena or Eileen or others to elaborate a little further.
Yeah, I mean, some of these facilities, you know, could be underground and so there's still the space on top. But, you know, again, like something with a vault, you may not be able to put big structures and things on top. So you could use the space as like with a field. So there may be, um, some uses that would work on, on top of an underground facility, but not, it wouldn't be sort of wide open. And then when you have other areas like with this, you know, the open space, I think, again, there, there are some different options. But, you know, you do need to think about if there's going to be, you know, flooding happening there and how that would affect anything that you might, that you might locate there, so.
Is that something that we could include in the language if the space becomes unusable? That we prioritize finding additional space in that community? Because the worst thing that would happen is we have some communities that have less open space than others, but where we know we're planning to increase density. I'd hate for those to be overly impacted by something like this without having said, we're keeping an eye on that and that's not our intention.
Yeah.
And, you know, this, this came up even in the PSMP, how do we prioritize for that?
Yeah, and it may not be necessarily unusable. I mean, it may be a, a shift, you know what I mean? There may be a change in how the space is used. So, because I wouldn't, again, I don't think some of these would, would sort of include it's, it's being used in some.
Yeah, I, I can't imagine that it would ever become totally unusable space. I mean, though, just the nature of that, facilities are such that they could be multipurpose, but there are going to be some restrictions because, again, you do not want people at risk, uh, in these areas and you don't want, you can't, uh, damage the structure if there's an underground structure. You'd have to, you know, you're limited to the, uh, foundation depths, et cetera, sometimes. But when we did the studies we've done.
With the safety issue, I'm in agreement on that. I'm just concerned that with our open space in the county, it is death by a thousand cuts. That is always the first place we go when we have to accommodate any other need. Greater housing, multifamily housing, stormwater management.
So I think, I think it behooves staff to, um, put some additional thinking on this notion and, and to develop some additional analysis and perspective for your staff report that would come in, in March. I have some reservations and concerns about a zoning requirement for some sort of offset.
I understand.
You know, seeing as, as much of the focus of, of the study is trying to get the, the, the zoning laws out of the way of, of our public use and our public facilities and our capital improvements project. But here we are hearing this concern.
Well, I don't want to miss the forest for the trees here, almost literally. And I, given that there were some comments on this already in the comments, um, you know, I may be the only person who's worried about it.
I'd also like to say that we do a pretty extensive, whenever we do a project, we do pretty extensive public, uh, engagement and outreach. And so, you know, some of the ones we've looked at before, like Cardinal School, it was very clear the community wanted us to preserve the sledding hill. And so we did that. Uh, some of that came up when we were discussing Woodstock Park, sledding hill was huge, a huge, uh, thing that people wanted us to maintain. So I think in our public engagement process, we tend to be pretty sensitive to all of that. And I, I really don't believe that many of these properties will be, I mean, I, they're not going to be unusable. It's just going to, they're, they're going to be used differently, as Eileen said.
Editorial comment, those pictures are nice and pretty, but is there a way in these type of facilities that instead of grass, we have like native ground covers?
We had a similar comment, I think, at one of our, our public engagement sessions. Liz, I think you gave a good answer about the trade-offs between the, the addition of natural vegetation and, and rocks and other debris and the capac, the capacity of the overland relief measure to provide the, the relief that it's intending to do so.
To get the water out of there, I get that.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, in some of these areas, the water goes there anyway, uh, you know, I mean. So we want to make sure that what's being used there is consistent with the amount of, you know, for overland relief, that it, it's consistent with the fact that the water is going to go there anyway. But as far as the planting, I mean, you know, we would, we're going to plant what's responsive to the community that comes out in the, um, usually in the public engagement. And we do, you know, heavily rely on, you know, native plants. Uh, obviously for an athletic field, that didn't work out very well. But if it's a swell and, and, you know, a, and a drainage swell or an overland flow path, the, that, that, it might be that native plants would be the way to go.
Okay.
Nobody's precluding the use of native plants.
Great, that's all I need to know, thank you.
Right.
So in your Zoko memo, we do make, mention a couple of other types of stormwater management facilities that could be utilized in some instances. Uh, there could be examples where a flood wall i- is needed. We have examples of some of those in, in the community all, already. Uh, we could have some utility with a pond, whether it's a wet pond or a dry pond. That is a type of facility that, that could be, could be utilized.
Yeah, we're using those dry ponds in a lot of, I mean, there's some that are literally the size of this table, they're so tiny. But they're cool because their pocket, you can put them in all sorts of places. It's like, that's great, more we can do that, the better. You know, I've seen them in the medians of roads, seen them in parks, I've seen them, you know, they pop up in all fascinating places. And every one of them, they're small, but they, a lot of them end up making a difference. So the more of those, the better.
I know the county used to have a program where they would pay or pay for part of a, um.
Stormwater.
Stormwater feature, yeah, and I. And I did a tour, and they like brought us to an apartment, like garden apartments, and like, "Look, the county paid for this one in this private property." So I don't know if that still exists. I often tell people in my neighborhood list serve to, to look into a county program when they ask.
Yeah, it was the Stormwater Wise Program. Um, yeah, that was, um, um, it was cut actually during the, with the COVID kind of budget adjustments. Um, but, you know, one thing we are looking at now with the stormwater utility, potential change in stormwater utility. Um, there may be, um, credits available through that, um, program for things that people have done on their, on their property as well. So it's a little different, but, but similar, you know.
But I, I would like to clarify that the zoning, um, requirements that we're talking about today are not for lot level, uh, uh, type of, uh, improvements. We are trying to talk about things that are going to serve more than one lot in, in a, in a region. And so I just want to, I did, I did want to try to clarify that, that this is not for the lot level sort of.
Thank you, we're definitely going off, off topic to a certain extent. So I get, so yes, I, I appreciate that.
So, so a couple of other examples, uh, there may be some instances with, with, uh, changes in topography where a lift station may be needed to, to transport stormwater up to a, a pipe at a, at a different level to, to catch grade. Uh, we do have pump stations as part of the wastewater system in about 14 locations in the county. And so, um, i- i- if, Eileen, if there's more commentary on this, please, please jump in. But they're all enclosed with a, a, a masonry structure similar to what you're seeing. These, these are actual.
Allison Brothers.
Yeah, they're, these are actually sites in Arlington, so.
No check though.
Yep, yep. So, so DES would be intending, if a, if a pump station was needed of some sort, DES would be intending to do something similar to what we would describe. And I imagine that the, the facade elevations would again be, be shared with and subject to the community engagement process that would, would be ahead of, of, um, that sort of thing. Uh, Jim, this may be one of the, uh, the, the small detention ponds that you were describing uh, on Laramore Street, but then there's also the, uh.
My understanding, they're really cost-effective, because if you build enough of them, you can avoid really huge things.
Yeah.
Will we continue with more of the green streets like what's on John Marshall?
Uh huh.
Okay, that looks very effective, too.
Right, yep.
Yeah, that was, you know, as part of the Stormwater Master Plan, you know, almost 10 years ago, we did a study, and I think they had found, you know, potentially 1,100 locations. And then we've kind of narrowed those down and been building sort of the, the more cost-effective ones that, you know, get more water quality benefit, um, you know, and more treatment.
Do we have, does DES have, keep like an inventory? So when a street does get a major rebuild, that's the time when it becomes cost-effective, because you're doing it as part of a larger project?
Yeah, so that, that retrofit study, those are included in the mapping system. So when other departments are doing projects, they can see, you know, um, you know, that there were potential locations identified there. And we actually, our staff collaborate a lot with, um, uh, the Neighborhood Conservation, um, program. And then also, like, if Water Source Trees is doing, you know, um, the wastewater pipe or drinking water, sometimes, you know, if they're going to dig things up, you know, we'll operate on that as well.
Because it certainly, sometimes drives me crazy when we do a project, like we do a bump out. And the bump out's a enormous piece of concrete.
Yeah.
Where, why didn't you just put a little one of those in?
Yeah.
Where you, we didn't need that much concrete, nobody, sidewalk is already so wide.
Yeah, they're definitely working with, yeah, on the complete streets, you know, kind of, and, and the Neighborhood Conservation. So, yeah, we, a lot of the projects actually are kind of going in in combination with those projects.
So when it comes to what's happening in the zoning ordinance right now, a couple of things to just, um, uh, bring you up to speed on so that everyone is understanding how our, our current, uh, ordinances are applicable to this world of, of underground detention vaults and, and overland relief measures and what have you. So we, we do have a section of Article 12 that, in our use categories, where we talk about, uh, public utilities. And you're seeing a, a screen capture of that on the, the right-hand side. We generally classify them into two different, we don't have definitions for these. We, we definitely classify them in, in minor, in major. Minor, think small area, unmanned, no, no personnel. A major utility, think that, you know, the water pollution control plant is the classic example. We have personnel there, it's operating on a county-wide, possibly even a 24-hour, hour basis. Uh, so we have those use categories. And, and taking a look at, at first at the, the lower half of the screen, this is the use table for our, our districts, our lowest intensity districts. You can see by and large, the major utilities, you need a use permit, and the minor utilities are, are by right. And, and the, the stormwater ma- management facilities that we've been talking about would be classified by and large as minor utilities. Compare that to the public district use table above. We have the major utilities row that's there, um, use permit in S3A, a blank for, uh, SD, and a use permit in PS. But for the minor utilities category, we have no row there at all. And when there's no row, that's equivalent to prohibited. It's a, it's a, a do-not-pass code, don't even look at your $200. So, so a, a clear issue that this tax amendment is trying to correct, um, first off. Um, as far as our setbacks requirements go, uh, again, in, in the much-maligned Article 3 that Mr. Hogan was referencing previously, within our setback areas, we prohibit by and large the placement of structures. What is a structure? Basically, anything that's attached to the ground.
Fences, light posts.
Light posts.
Yeah, yeah, so, 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 and I, I, I know I'm touching into a, a sensitive area per the commission's conversations about Arlington Junction Park, but I'm glad we're having this conversation so soon thereafter, that, that's fresh on, on your, your mind, so. And there are implications with this from a stormwater perspective, mostly for the above-ground, not necessarily for the underground, that the, if it's a below-ground, um, you know, that can encroach per conversations that we've had with the zoning ministry. But, but that, the trash rack that pops out, for example.
Would a, would a manhole count? Didn't have to be in the setback?
Probably not, that would be fine, because think, think about with the rules related to patios. Uh, i- i- if it's below eight inches, it can encroach in, um, but, but the, the, the stuff that, that's coming up above, where this really gets to be a pain point is with a lot of our park features. Your trash, your bike rack, your recycling receptacle, your play equipment, your, your dugout bu- for, for the softball team. All of these, they're, they're affixed to the ground, they're considered structures, and they have to meet the setbacks that are prescribed here.
We all have some, some of the really, really tiny parts that the setback takes over the whole park, and you could have to put anything in it.
Yep, that's exactly right, that's exactly right. Um, we mentioned fences previously, this is, this is an excellent di- it's not in the zoning ordinance, but it's a, it's an illustrative that's used for administration purposes by, um, by the zoning division. And so what I'm, what I want to draw your attention to is the four-foot, um, maximum fence height along a public right-of-way, uh, as well as the three-foot offset that you're seeing at the bottom of the screen, along a side yard on a, on a corner lot. And so, so that, um, those are two areas you're thinking from a stormwater, think of a stormwater management facility, one of those, equipment cabinets, the enclosures. There may be an instance where we'd like to enclose that for security purposes, and a four-foot fence is, is just not going to provide an effective security barrier. The same goes for, on, on the public space side of the ledger. Think of all of the different, whether it's, uh, play equipment, whether it's a basketball court, whether it's some of the examples you'll see later, some of our diamond faci- facility, diamond fields. Uh, again, we have very, um, active, um, athletic facilities in small spaces in, in various parts of, of the county. And having a taller fence helps contain that activity, prevent the ball from getting into the street.
All this is.
Jim, Jim's like, "I'm sold, I, I get it."
And it won't be in the zoning ordinance, it just would hope DAS, where they do build these types of fences, takes the actual design into account, because a chain-linked fence looks awful, and it says all the wrong things. There's lots of good examples in the county of good fences in park areas that we, you shouldn't be encouraging and avoiding the chain lines.
You have to put the cups in that and make full little design, yeah.
Yeah, you're looking at it all wrong.
I feel, I feel like I'm beating the dead horse, but I feel like if, uh, that's another, where, again, the public engagement process, that's going to come out.
It can't be in the zoning ordinance.
Yeah, yeah, that cha- that chain, that chain-linked fence zones up. I, I'm, I'm expecting some, some adverse feedback from, from members of the community that, to challenge us to do better on that front, so, yeah.
Last month, we, and I can't remember the, the exact nuances of it, but we were trying to increase the height size of a fence around bus parking. Is that related to what we're talking about now?
Probably not, I'll have to go back and, and see.
Yeah, because is that zone, is one of the public zone?
And the neighbors came out, and they were like, "You, you advertised this during Thanksgiving." We didn't know, but it was miscommunication, because it wasn't going to impact them.
Is this, this is also an Arlington Junction Park thing?
No, it was related to the bus parking, I think it's.
Is it prevalent, is it out of prevalent?
No, it was the bus facility, I thought it was a park, I forget Quincy.
Quincy, the one across from Marsh, uh, Marsh and Liberty High School.
Yeah, and they needed to increase the, the height of the fence because, uh, for security and there was.
It's folded and clean law issues there.
I think that's, I think that's because that's the, um, that's the site that's been so controversial.
Right. There's a lawsuit on it.
People are worried that there's going to be a bigger development there that's going to get put in by the little bits and pieces.
Campbell's knows under the tent.
Also, that site.
It's, no, but we all know which one.
Buck site, it's a company. Yeah, so, and they were concerned with that.
Industrially-zoned property, number one.
Right.
And, and not, not a, not a public space, to the best of my knowledge, and not a stormwater management facility.
Right, it was actually, it wasn't even zoned, it was actually an old right-of-way. Quincy, Quincy Street's old right-of-way.
Yeah.
That was being de-napped.
But the history is that.
Nasty.
The association is huge and should be really true. They've had so much development with an outdated plan. They feel like they're always playing catch-up on the development, and that they're not getting the full story. With, with these taller fences, do we have an option to vegetate them with native evergreen vines? Or do better to add to that, or? I know sometimes we're told, "Oh, that's a bad idea," but if we're just keeping something in and we don't need the visibility, that's not going to be in the zoning code, but.
That's a, a question I'd ask of, of DES and DPR, have we done that, or could we do that?
We have some nice vines that are semi-evergreen here.
We do, I mean, I think it's an option. I think the problem is that when the, you know, some of the vines, native or, or based, doesn't matter, they take over the space and it's hard to maintain, because you still have to run it down. You know, they're going to grow everywhere, so. It is something that we explore. I know that we not native necessarily fence facing the street, but we do have some vines, I remember Dawson Terrace, when we did the project right over the playground, very recent, a couple of years ago, something between now, but before COVID, just before COVID. Um, there was, we had some vines around eternal fence, I think it's a fence next to the basketball court.
Yeah.
There a couple of years, but, but so we do explore that, and that's always our intent to explore that. So we have vines there going around the fence, but it's not exterior fence to the park, so. It's easier to manage.
Liz?
Yeah, I, I think DES is extremely open to planting, but again, I think that would come out in the public engagement, um, facility. I mean, the process that we do, where we're not trying to make all the neighborhoods ugly or anything. It, we certainly can consider those kind of things.
Would it be possible to, I'm having a little bit of a hard time to start understanding exactly what we're talking about. I know that we talked about retaining walls and then having the railing on top of that, like, that kind of makes sense to me, and I understand it. Um, I'm, I'm unsure of where we would allow, um, you know, an eight-foot wall along a right-of-way that would make sense. I, I imagine you guys would need to propose that. So I'm wondering, what is the problem that we're fixing, you know, beyond the corner and beyond the, the setback? But like, where would we need a, a seven-foot wall along a public facility? Like, I'm thinking of the Virginia Dominion, um, right here over by, um, Northside Social. Is that what we're talking about? Some sort of like, um, uh, a utility that would have to be enclosed in such a way that would require a?
I mean, I think for the stormwater, you know, if there was a facility there that had some equipment, you know, that, which needed to be protected, I mean, I think there was some thinking that, you know, if there was.
Well, we're actually, we're actually looking at some concepts in some watersheds uh, that, where we would want to provide some overland relief and a place for water to flow, and then we might need to protect nearby homes with, with a, a flood wall. I mean, that's, yeah, I, I, is that, I think that's the answer to the question that you're asking, that we, we do perceive that there might be some places where that would be required.
So really, it's channelization?
I wouldn't know that it's channelization, it would be to keep, I mean, I guess you could call it that, but it's really more to just keep, you know, to limit the inundation area so that it can't, you know, because some of the areas are flat and they're, they might be too wide.
Creating a space for the water, but then you're also protecting, you know, so there's some houses next to it. So not necessarily creating a new channel, but just maybe putting a barrier.
Keeping the water from encroaching into the private properties.
So I was going to get to the 14-foot flood wall, but before we get to that, there are this fence and wall that we're allowing within the setback. So I'm just trying to understand, what is it that we're buying? Really, what are, what are we paying for at the end of the day? So, um, and so I just, I would love to understand a little bit better, like, you know, is there a park example where we, like, the, 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 I always mispronounce the Barna- Barna Key?
Benaker.
Benaker Park, like, did we run into a situation where we wanted to put a higher fence or a higher wall, um, along 18th, like? And, um, so that's where I'm a little bit nervous, like, are we talking about putting walls, um, to the public face? Are we talking, okay, I'll leave it at that.
So, you couldn't.
I'll say I've got some images later on in, in this next session that I, I think will help spark some, some conversation and, and help, uh, illustrate what we go into in, in narrative in the memo, but Arena is probably going to be much more.
I think we, maybe we can leave it after we go through examples, and I can instantly go back to the Benaker.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, so, so, um, we outlined this in, in the memo, you can kind of see, I hope I haven't buried the lead too much. We have a, a series of, of potential options, uh, that, that we're recommending for your consideration uh, in, in advance of your public hearing, we'd love to get some feedback. We think that by, by just adding that row for all other minor utilities, making that by right, uh, that, that enable, that takes the prohibition issue out of the way that allows DES to, to go through the public process, well, for, for, um, facilities that quite frankly have already been, um, um, that are already in the CIP and funded per the, the most recent CIP from, from the board, uh, to continue with that feasibility work to, in, with the goal of establishing, um, stormwater management facilities on public lands. We're talking about parks, it could be a scenario where there's a partnership with APS, much like the, the Cardinal Project, but, um, you know, the, the first recommendation would be to make these adjustments in the principal use table uh, for the public districts. Uh, Commissioner Peterson?
Uh, well, and this is going to go through PFRC anyway, so Planning Commission would be reviewing these projects anyway?
Not necessarily, PFRC doesn't, all the vehicles are on those.
Not, um, to the best of my knowledge, not necessarily this, so, and we'll, we'll check, we'll check back on this to, just to confirm, because this is an area where, where I could use some, some fill-in. I, I was under the impression that PFRC would be for, like, the actual school or the actual community center building, and, um, and that's, that's a part where I need correction.
I think historically, that is the way it's gone, but.
The fire station, but if, if a big structure was done, not, not to get the minor ones, we're talking about major ones.
Yeah.
Theoretically, that, because.
Like the, like, I don't know if the vault, Cardinal Elementary Vault went to PFRC.
Was it, Jim, do you remember?
No, it was not, no, it was not.
Yeah.
I don't think it did.
The stormpipe we knew about, and that's part of the reason where the school was situated where it was, because it couldn't straddle the pipe, and that was a street that we had.
No, that's, you're right, because even with the schools, when we did Discovery, I think there were changes afterwards that were not part of the PFRC. For example, lighting the fields.
But like those pumping stations that you saw, that presumably would go through a PFRC, because there's a design to those buildings that would.
Would it?
I would think it sh- you know, that's the other thing, I was never sure. If it comes from the schools, it goes to PFRC. If it comes to the fire department, it comes from PFRC. But DES stuff.
Bus.
DES generally doesn't come through PFRC.
Yeah, like a pump station may be a little different. I mean, a lot of our projects are, you know, like, you know, we're kind of working, you know, doing more of the underground infrastructure, so it's maybe a little bit different, but.
I don't know for sure.
Like, with a pump station, it's a possibility, because that would be sort of in there, you know, more of a, 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 a ground facility.
And parks do not go through PFRC, they have to go on separate.
So, so we'll do a little bit more home, we'll, we'll fill that out in the staff report for you on, and bring some clarity on that front, so.
But certainly the minor ones shouldn't go through, and they should be by right, essentially. Done, you propose it, it gets built.
Well, what, yeah, what is, what is minor?
Well, that's what you got to do, having, you're having. Well, that's what you gotta do, having, you're having two categories here, which we have to have definitions.
So, so, there's the adjustments to the public district use table, uh, a, a host of different, um, uh, options for setbacks. Now, the, the text itself in attachment one does not list each one of these, um, public space features, but we wanted, we do list them in the memo with, and the, the feedback we received from the zoning administrator was, the zoning should not have this entirely long explicit exclusive list. There, there is some, some generality, there's some descriptiveness with the zoning language that we've drafted for your consideration, to give some options, to give some flexibility for new types of of facilities to be, and amenities, features to be considered, but, but this, this list, which is here and which is in the memo, this is what me, what we mean when we talk about accessory structures encroaching into a required setback for ju, for just a park, that, um, keep in mind that, but we've talked about different types of public facilities, but, but everything with, that's in attachment one is, is, uh, is dialed in and scoped related to either a stormwater management facility or a public space, so, a setback encroachment.
If we were to do something like this and we'd be adding any of these, would this go through, um, PRC? Or would it just be approved? For example, if we were to add lights, not to exceed fifteen feet in height or add a structure using cell cloth, would that go through PRC at least? I mean, I don't think you need a whole new park planning process.
Sure.
Would it go through any public review process?
So, I mean, uh, any, whenever we would be, so there, there are differences, like, if this is for this part of the part, part master plan, uh, finding this management, yes, it goes through the whole process.
Yeah.
Gets, yeah, gets approved by county board, there is a big public process surrounding that, if it's part of like a capital improvement plan, maintenance plan, when we are replacing existing amenity with the existing, maybe it's just up to the current standards, for example, light.
Right, right.
That would go, we usually bring the, all of those to PRC, I mean, this gets involved in, involved in almost everything.
Okay.
Uh, but would, that would also have a public process, because we don't even design, even like to like, we don't design any process without a public input, we have a three series of two or three meetings.
Yeah.
Even when we are replacing a playground with a playground, because they're always different, we always, you know.
Right. Well, that should give people some comfort too, knowing that these changes are never going to be very dramatic, without them saying that, yeah, right.
Exactly, never, I mean, I don't see any of these being removed without public input, I can't see any of this.
My, my hope is that this opens up the conversation.
Yeah.
It, it, with the public, that, that it affords more creativity and also prevents, uh, sort of gotchas where something comes through a master planning process, has that community consensus, and then we start talking about permits with, with the zoning administrator and fingers start being wagged.
The permit thing, especially in a park, drives me crazy, because like you say, you can't put a bench without getting approval, well, you could put the bench on the sidewalk by the bus stop, but then if you move it five feet to the park, you can't do it, you have to move it twenty-five feet back, that.
Yeah, there's that cutout for the bench for the, for the transit station.
It's actually crazy, you know.
It's a lot of street lights, you would have street lights in the, within the right of way.
And you can't have it ten feet behind.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I agree.
I have a, like, a question.
Of course, similar to that, on, um, streetlights, speaking of streetlights, but now the, the, and this is a little bit on the form-based code, where, um,
we were supposed to underground a lot of those utilities.
Okay.
Um, and they're not, they're being dropped on the sidewalk, so, that's the other question, is that like, um, and I'll quote Commissioner Hughes, an externality that we're allowing? That now those things, utilities and minor utilities that are intended to be undergrounded are now going to be allowed to be above ground? And we're kind of just inadvertently allowing all that to happen within these setbacks?
So, so my initial, so my initial reaction is just thinking about the subject matter at hand, the, the stormwater management facility, and so an underground detention vault is by its nature underground, the above ground features would be that the pond, if, if a pond is, is selected, uh, the, the pump station, and it's really not the pumps from, speaking with DES, it's usually the generator that's being enclosed there, so, um, as far when I'm hearing Commissioner Sarley, and please jump in and correct me if I'm wrong, I'm hearing, I'm thinking more of, of like, you know, a, like, um, electricity lines and, and cable boxes and other sort of equipment cabinets and, and, and things.
And we have some of those on parks, these little green boxes and things that I think they're electricity, um, but I'm, I'm thinking of like a street corner where there's that big silver four foot, five foot tall, like, three foot by three hundred traffic cabinet, those are technically, on the form-based code, supposed to be undergrounded, and we have not seen undergrounding. And, and now, once we open up these setbacks for allowing these structures, right, could that be considered a structure? And it might not be DES that does that.
Um, some of that may be DES, but then there are, you know, some of the other, um, utility providers too, but yeah, I mean, I, you know, to be honest, I don't know all the details, I mean, we could try to find out more.
All right, so let's just flag that, to see if we're not inadvertently allowing a lot of this infrastructure, for example, to come up and start buying park space or public space or.
I, I would, well, and, and another thing that comes to mind, uh, again, going back to attachment one, uh, looking at the, and this is really page one of attachment one, looking at, at the, uh, encroachments that would be permitted, we're talking about, um, stormwater facilities as well as, um, the structures associated with parks, and so, uh, just kind of putting my zoning administrator hat on, if I'm an equipment cabinet associated with a traffic signal, I'm not, I can't, and I'm the zoning administrator, I can't draw a straight line between the two.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
Do we have any parks where we have utility line, overhead utility lines going through them? I haven't seen any, but.
I think I'm assuming that we do, some leftovers.
Total line around this.
Going over there maybe, yeah, yeah.
So, would you have to get a use permit for the power pole that goes through the park? When it's on this, in the setback area?
It's an interesting question, and they're not usually done by YAS, they're done by, most of the time by.
Yeah, but they normally go with the right of way. Don't they follow the right of way though, versus going straight through a park?
But they wonder if it's like one of those leftovers, when you acquire land and it remains there, so it's an interesting question.
Like, power lines, you know, power poles in the backyards in my neighborhood, it's not a street.
Yeah, I know, there are some in residential, I'm trying to think, yeah.
And when we acquire laws to expand parks, I don't know if you necessarily can get through that, you know, you may have to, probably, so that's an interesting question.
Yeah, or underground.
Let me take a look at the, at the watch, do we have any public speakers? No one signed up, I'm guessing. Okay, and then, um, how much more presentation slash, you know, items do you guys have, have we, I don't want to.
I'm on slide twenty-six, I don't, I, I mean, I've got a lot more, I've got a few more pictures, and I, I don't think I've got, I think, maybe six or seven slides at the most. Yeah, so we're, we're quite near the end.
Okay, I'm just trying to make sure you don't, you don't cut it short.
No, no, that's good, that's good, uh, so, uh, we've mentioned fencing already, so, uh, one of the, the items we, we'd like to get some feedback and consideration on is certainly taller fences for stormwater management facilities up to a maximum of eight feet high, uh, there is a provision, you saw it on the, the fence diagram, a three foot setback from public right of way, um, in coordination with DES, um, the, really, the, the thing that's going to be above ground, if necessary, would be that equipment cabinet, that enclosure for the building, and so, um, our DES colleagues feel that they can continue to meet that three foot offset from the public right of way, and so we did not include that, that, that encroachment into the stormwater management facilities, uh, recommendations. Now, you've heard us topic, teach, talk extensively about, uh, public spaces, however, and so the, the draft, uh, that we've included in attachment one does, um, uh, propose and consider, uh, a, a maximum of, of an eight foot tall, uh, fence within, within any setback, and again, that street setback is the key, right, because right now the maximum is four, but it would also be able to encro, it would be taller, up to eight feet, but it could also go within that three foot, um, that setback, and there's, there's a lot of texts that we were able to, um, there's, there's, um, some extensive narrative in the memo, that three foot setback, um, came into the ordinance back in nineteen seventy-seven, uh, at the time, if, if you were on that corner lot, you could only go up to four feet, now you can go to six feet, but at the time you could only go to four, and so the BZA was getting a lot of variances coming through the process, and so to, to, to tamp down the number of variances, the board, um, increased that, so, so you, so a person on a corner lot could functionally enclose their rear yard to go up to six, but the, the, the staff recommended and the board approved, uh, that that fence should be three foot off the, um, the back of the sidewalk to create more of a clear zone for pedestrians, so, um, now, now, from a, from a pedestrian, and we'll, we have some slides that, that get to this, um, but, and, and I, this is kind of what I was alluding to, Commissioner Sarley, some example, these are not, I don't think any of these are eight foot tall walls, but so, one of the things that we've talked about with DPR is changes in topography, this, we're not a flat county, we have hills all over the place, and, and so sometimes there could be a low wall, sometimes there's to be a taller fall or a taller fence, uh, in, in the instance of, um, I think that's, help me out here, Lion Park, Lion Village Park? Yeah, Lion Village Park, where we have the, the tennis courts right there, so there's a variety of different conditions where we have, where we, we already have fences and walls, some of them quite tall, right near, um, the, the, the set, the sidewalk, and, and if, if the commission felt strongly about this and staff needed to continue to work on this, um, on some sort of offset language, for, for example, that, that would allow for the fence or the wall for a park to go right up to that sidewalk, but perhaps only in instances where there's enough width for a pedestrian, where there's enough clear zone, we can, we can take that. This is an area where, where we've continued to have internal conversations on this, and we're, we're looking for some direction and feedback and guidance from the commission.
Yeah, I want to really be careful with those, because we really do encourage sidewalks and clear sidewalks, sidewalks that people can actually view.
Yeah.
Uh, with no obstructions, and if the fence goes right up to it, I want to be careful, because we have a lot of really, really narrow sidewalks in this county that are really substandard. And I want to be very, very careful about that, we don't inadvertently discourage people from using those sidewalks or create a situation, because halfway down there's a power pole sitting right in the middle of that sidewalk, so the, the space between the fence and the power pole, is this why?
Can I ask, so, would the trade-off be then that the wall would be encroaching into the park space?
Right, and that's the trade-off, yeah.
Yeah, so it's the trade-off, um, I feel like this would be a very difficult thing to make a blanket determination on, I mean, it'd be nice to give the flexibility, but because I think some, some do, but you're right, some might, we, it might be very tough, it might be something, yeah, where you've, where the sidewalk looks fine until you get to the pinch pointer, yeah.
That, the height, sorry.
Commissioner Sarley?
That, the height, I think, because like, if it's a retaining wall, I, I understand it's retaining wall, it's topography, there's a lot to that, but sort of just opening up this eight foot tall fence or wall, um, I'm unsure as to when we would use, like, I, I understand the two foot wall, I understand even the four foot wall, right? If there's a bungee cord behind it or something, but you can still participate in that space, once you start to get above four, you're now segregating the, the public spaces, you know?
Right, especially, especially when it's something you can't see through.
Right.
Yeah.
If it's a wall as opposed to a fence that you can see through, Commissioner Sarley is absolutely right that it.
Can you say more about why we would be doing that, because, you know, like, the, the old, the, the best practices from William White were, you know, like, street level, open to the street, um, so.
See, that big wall there in the middle upper picture, is that a retaining wall or is that an actual wall that is flat, um, you know, it, it's just.
I think it's retaining.
Sounds like a retaining wall.
Bridge Park, yeah.
Like, the fence at Jenny Dean was beautiful, you know, that was more porous, you could see through it.
So I would, I mean, this is my interpretation, and I, I'm obviously, I'm not too, too, very disciplined in this, but, um, these, these design details, we always pay attention to that, that is the most important. We don't just look at the park and we see the park from the inside, we always, we are very, very careful how we plan the outside, how that park is going to interact with streets with our users, because users aren't going to be coming to the park, uh, that way, the reason why, this is, why some of these fences cannot be four feet, uh, uh, tall, for example, when we have some amenities and we have them in the county, they're, we're required to have them more and more with our community, such as, for example, dog parks and community gardens. Their standards are that we need higher fences.
Oh, I'm not arguing about the fence, absolutely, I get where we need to have really high fences in the, around a tennis court, you have to have a really high fence, got it, not, not a problem. It's when it's a wall that you can't see through, that's the concern I have, that's a, uh-uh, that's not going to work, an eight foot w, wall where it's just hiding what's behind it is just wrong on every urban designs.
But I think, I mean, I don't know.
I mean, they would do that in the park design, we would do that only if we don't have any other choice, if it's like a topography issue, we would never have a wall hiding our parks as a, as a part of the design, just have it there, I don't think we have, at one instance in the county, at least in newer designs, where we have that, so that would never be our intention to just provide a wall there to separate the, the park from the street.
I mean, you know, I could see having even around this power substations for security purposes, you want an actual wall that you can't see through. That, even though they don't do that, but.
But that's fine, we're not encouraging people to go in and use it.
Right, I have no problem with that, but a park, totally different.
And I think, I, I mean, I completely agree with that, and that is something that, that gets resolved in some ways, then through the community process with the park design, because I don't think that community level support or the county board at the end must approve this project, uh, would approve, would approve, uh, just the wall for wall purposes, you know, but, but in some instances where we need to have retaining walls, I think maybe aligning that.
Retaining wall isn't a problem.
Yeah, they're.
Can we, so can we add that word in there, retaining wall, specifically not a freestanding wall, right?
Well, there's also the flood walls too, I don't know, this is, this is separate.
Separate from the flood, sorry, separate from the flood walls, so what, so the, the, I'm hearing some consensus, I think what I'm hearing, Commissioner Sarley, is that the, the, uh, ZOCO is, is certainly top middle here, there's a topography change, the, uh, a taller wall helps with, you know, fortifying the earth. It, it, perhaps lower right I'll go to next, a shorter wall per up to four feet tall is, is an effective barrier, there doesn't preclude that access that the William White is seeing into the space, um, I'm, I think I'm also hearing that, that instances, for example, with, with the dog park or with the community garden, that an eight foot tall fence would be appropriate so long as it, it's, it's, um, it pours, see-through, I can see. The, the commission has, has some, um, serious concerns about the, the, the impacts with an, an eight foot tall palisade wall, something that obscures.
Now, for flood control, that's totally up to.
And, and we've separated it.
That's a technical requirement, that could be up to a hundred feet tall, I don't care, it depends on what the water is going to be kept away from, and that's, that's what determines the height.
Yeah.
By definition, it has to be solid, because water can't go through it.
That's right.
So it's a non-permeable height to be determined by the need of water.
Yeah, that.
Yeah.
Period, you know, that's, that's, right, that's the answer to that.
So I, I'm hearing some consensus to, now, now, as, as a counterpoint to go there, you know, Ms. Lasek has mentioned how, that the public process by and large, we feel would prevent an eight foot palisade from, from being erected in, to separate the public from one of our, our, um, public spaces. If, if the, the commission was, was comfortable with leaving it up to the public process, we could potentially bring forth something similar to what we've described, but but if the commission is, is really looking for us to go back and make additional edits, that would be helpful feedback to, to hear.
I can go first, I do not feel comfortable leaving an eight foot wall.
As an option.
Yeah, and, and that clearly is, right, clearly right now it says you can put an eight foot wall, period, um, I think, you know.
Helpful feedback.
The, to compare it to the flood wall, that's, there's the utility associated with that, so nobody's going to stake a flood wall, and that's why I think if we can introduce the retaining wall, you know, for the center and illustration, that becomes really clear, so then you're dealing with the problem that you're solving, you're not just placing a wall, um, so that, I think, is where I am.
I'll go with, with Commissioner Sarley.
Commissioner Peterson, did you have a question?
Just when you were giving examples of country, on my paper, you mentioned the community garden, and I wasn't sure why a community garden isn't to prevent people from.
Yeah, fence.
Yeah, eight foot fence, to like prevent people from stealing tomatoes or.
Yes, exactly, that's a common truth, you know, here it doesn't need to be necessarily eight foot, it's not always eight foot, it can sometimes be six foot, so the six feet is for dog parks and community gardens, sometimes we have higher depending on the circumstances of the site, but it is, we actually have, that's a big issue over us, so.
And that's for a, that's for a fence, not.
The roof fence, yeah.
It's a roof over it now and it's locked. It's a roof over it now and it's locked.
Yeah, is that, sorry, I don't mean to be too pushy, but I think I think it I am uncomfortable with putting zoning that we can put an eight foot wall on a park. That just doesn't make sense to me.
No, that's why we're, that's that's the type of, that's why we're here to get that type of feedback ahead of your public hearing, so. All right. Nearing the end, Commissioner Starley, we've staffed, we've had extensive conversations about the the potential impacts related to auxiliary pumps as well as backup generators. Again, DES's strong preference, if at all possible, is for completely gravity systems, where gravity by natural forces is draining the water to out to to and and discharging through through gravity functions. But the topography may require it, and so.
In my understanding, strong water is almost by definition graphic driven. Very rare that there are.
Yeah, I mean, they, I, you know, I think there's a preference to have it be through gravity, gravity flow.
They used to, they strongly followed old stream beds.
Yeah, I mean, the, yeah, the system overall, you know, is designed that way. I think with some of these new facilities, you know, depending on, sometimes if you make it deeper, it gives you more storage. And so that's one option that they're, you know, looking at with some of the vaults is, you know, depending on how much space we have. And, you know, so we can go down a little bit more, then we get more capacity, but then we might need a pump, so it's it's a trade off. So there may be, I think, you know, Liz can jump in, there's probably not a lot that would need a pump, but it's 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 an option.
But it would be no different than the sewer pumps.
Yeah, for the waste water, yeah.
Structure would be necessary.
Yeah, similar.
Yeah, it's a it's a lot less expensive to operate a gravity system than a pump system. The problem that we sometimes run into is the space constraints. We might be trying to save a tree or a recreation area or something and therefore need to go deeper than the outflow pipes are situated. And then so we would need to lift the water, pump it up up. And then, you know, because of the nature of the pumps, when it rains, you know, sometimes you lose power, so you need a backup generator.
Okay, that I under, that may, I understand that, so I agree with that. This is, yeah, we'll have to provide for this.
So so the, when we are having an intensive event, we want we want the generators to kick on and we want the pumps to work. The the challenge from an impact perspective is the what could be monthly testing of those generators to make sure that they're operational when we need them to be.
Only daylight hours, you know.
Yep, exactly. And so so this is this is an engagement matter that DES would would need to work out with adjacent neighbors and members of of the community. We have included full enclosure as a requirement. DES is, it it continues to do that, will will continue to do that. The generators would would still meet setback requirements. There are some slight encroachments already in the zoning ordinance for backup generators.
You know, it would be really great if at some point, instead of generators, we use solar and batteries as the backup. Maybe the technology isn't there yet, but that would be a way better preference than using generate diesel generators.
So nearing the end, Commissioner Starley, we we can skip through most of this because we've we've worked it into the presentation already. We've already talked about how with most improvements to a public space and with every one of our stormwater management facilities, there will be a specifically tailored à la carte public process that would would precede that. There's the review that comes as part of the the annual CIP as well. So even though a lot of what we've described is is by right, outside of the planning commission's monthly review, outside of SPRC, outside of the use permit process, there are levels of of engagement, feedback and 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 response where the public has a seat at at the table. The and so there's nothing in the zoning ordinance would would change what we're doing already. A lot of what we're doing is is tonight is describing what we're doing already. So specific to engagement for this study to date, and and DES has has taken a real leadership role on this in in socializing the text amendment in this body of work with those six critical watershed groups that that have been working with them, building those relationships as part of Flood Resilient Arlington. We've also done some informational presentations to C two E two, the PSMP Implementation Advisory Committee, the PRC. We also had a virtual public meeting on December fourteenth. I go more into this ad nauseam in in the memo you received over the weekend. But a lot of, again, a broken record, a lot of the comments that we we've hitched on tonight have also been things that we've heard from the members of the public, the role of public lands and what they play in stormwater management.
Thank you, Nick, it was very helpful.
Yeah. Yeah, so and and I'm happy to to recount some more of that feedback on the engagement that we've received. But I think it's aligned with and and we've accounted for that in some of the our analysis and the recommendations that we've received to date. So we we are, you know, depending on how how we do this evening and over the course of any further engagement, we are on track for an RTA next month in February. And and the commission would have a public hearing on this at their March regular meeting. If that, Mr. Chair, further questions, discussion?
I have a further question, and it may be because I haven't followed this as closely as I might have. I think this is great that we're doing this. I'm concerned about the stormwater. But it feels like we're missing the forest for the trees because we can do all of this. But if we keep letting our development increase impervious surface area, we're always going to be playing catch up. So is there a parallel process going on to address that? Or can we include it under the catalyst, you know, increased impervious surface area as a result of increased development? Even increased plan development, we know we're doing this. So you guys in DES are doing a great job, but this remains to be a really big issue.
I mean, there is the changes we made to the land disturbing activity permit process. That was something in, you know, I believe in twenty twenty one. And so that did add additional requirements. That's more for for new homes. So increases in impervious area there, they had an additional, you know, additional requirements to detain stormwater in addition to kind of the water treatment, you know, that they had had, you know, prior as well. So that was, you know, a recent change. I mean, I think, you know, there's, I guess there's a challenge. I mean, you know, if you have a site that redevelops and that adds impervious area, if it's still below what's allowed for the site, I mean, there's a limit to sort of, you know, the ability to control that, you know, unless we change. Again, those those sort of coverage, you know, requirements. So anyway, but I think.
And that's and that's for the the houses, because when the new houses go up, when it's great to site and put a new one.
Yeah.
There does seem to be some sort of storm storm water facilities built in the new houses, like, you know, the bioswales. And and there's like troughs that seem to have maybe water goes into. Now, isn't it true though, like when we do a site plan though, that stormwater has to be dealt with for the new, for the, any development that's under a site plan? That there has to be?
Yeah, I mean, any any development project, you know, has to do stormwater management, you know, as part of that, so I know that.
And does that mean usually having either some sort of stormwater detention that the water gets loosened, let out later after the storm passes? Or including green roofs, you know, that sort of stuff?
Yeah, typically, I mean, there's a standard that has to be met. So we don't necessarily specify what type of stormwater management, so they can do, you know, variety of things, pervious pavement, green roofs, stormwater, you know.
But does it also mean that what gets built has better control of the stormwater than what was there?
Um, yeah, generally, that is the case because a lot of what is sort of, you know, a lot of Arlington developed with no stormwater management. So when properties are replaced, a lot of times you're, you know, it's a, you know, it's a benefit in terms of adding that stormwater management. Now, you may have changes in the impervious, you know, coverage as well. But but typically, they, you know, are then, you know, also required to treat kind of that difference. So whatever the increased impervious area, you know, they they have to be managing that.
Have we ever had a site plan where it ended up being worse than this?
Um, you know, not to my knowledge. I mean, I can, you know, I can check.
I mean, I want to make sure we, that doesn't happen.
Yeah, you have to look at the.
Be really careful that that doesn't happen.
Yeah, yeah.
Because one of the advantages of our, the way we go by having site plan, one of the community benefits is stormwater management, that whatever we put in is going to be not just better, but significantly better.
We're not really worried about site plan, it's more the single family homes, the byway housing. Even some of the older ones with enormous driveways, I just, I how are we addressing that? And that's not for you to do, is that something we can be raising in our discussions? Put a little more pressure on that because I really do feel like this is never going to catch up, just walking around my neighborhood seeing this.
And that's one of these, the driveways have always driven me crazy. One of the things that we used to always think was good design for our neighborhoods was having the garage in the back. Because cars were hidden, you know, you basically had short people facing the street. You know, either houses, porches, doors, windows, and no big ugly garage doors. Which was a very good design. But that also meant a really long driveway. But our driveways, we also allowed a fully paved driveway. And I've seen driveways that are either all gravel in the neighborhoods. I've seen driveways where it's just two concrete strips with with planting down the middle. I've seen them where they're perviable pavers, they go most of the way back. There's lots of solutions to the big ugly driveway that are better, at least, than what we're allowing by right. Is there some way we can change that so that you don't have just this huge asphalt, like my house has, this big asphalt road that holds the way to the back of the house?
And Eileen, I know you're not used to us in these long discussions, but a lot of the time we raise these things knowing that they're not going to go anywhere now. But we socialize the discussion, we get it out there, and someone else will bring it up in six months. So is there a place for that here? I I really do worry that we could do all these things, but if we don't get a handle on this other sort of monster, the elephant in the room.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I think, again, it's it's a combination. We did make that change in twenty twenty one. I mean, it was, I think it was allowed sort of administratively. So it wasn't necessarily something that went through, you know, you know, the full commission process. But, you know, it was adding, so it was adding additional, you know, detention, stormwater detention requirements for new homes. So right now, I think we're just starting to see some of those projects coming through, kind of completing construction, you know, from that change in twenty twenty one. It was the end of twenty twenty one and then they had to, you know, the new permits came through and that kind of thing. So we're just seeing those projects, you know, come to fruition, so we'll be able to evaluate, you know, that more. But yeah, I mean, it it there's, you know, a lot of factors, you know, with the large driveways. We can't necessarily mandate how people do a driveway. I mean, again, we we do require stormwater management, so many of them do the pervious pavers. But I think the driveway choice, I mean, it plays into, you know, if that's some of your lot coverage, you know, that's a choice they're making. Like, do I want to use that that coverage?
Can we incentivize that or tree retention on the older homes? Is there a way we could be doing that when they're not coming into redevelopment, they're not triggering compliance with the rest of this? Is that something, and this is, I do raise these issues a lot. I feel like we all, we have great planners here, great plans, but a lot of these issues are siloed. Does this come up here? Does this come up in forestry natural resource management?
Yeah.
The other thing we don't understand, for example, with the driveway and what's considered impervious. I was told once, and I could I could have misheard it, that when you have the driveway, it's considered impervious. When you do a concrete or an asphalt driveway from your apartment line to the garage, that's measured in the square feet. But if you did the two concrete strips with the grass down the middle, that doesn't matter. It's still considered impervious for the whole driveway from front to back without backing out that strip down the middle.
Yeah, well, I believe the drive, the whole driveway, I think, does count. Sometimes the challenge with the grass in the middle and and also with gravel driveways is that, you know, the the soil gets compacted. So just from the action of the car, you know, if it doesn't stay on the strips, you know, that that's.
If we had a dirt driveway, that would be true.
Yeah.
You had no paving whatsoever, you'd still have the same issue.
Yeah.
Gravel's probably better than dirt.
Yeah, well, the, yeah, the pervious driveways, you know, the way they're constructed, they have a gravel layer underneath. So it kind of keeps the structure open, so there's a, there's more structure underneath there to kind of keep the poor space.
The grass down the middle never gets driven by definition, that's the point of it.
Yeah, I mean, it shouldn't, but I think sometimes, again, the car isn't.
These driveways are so narrow, you can't.
Yeah, you can't win the road.
Commissioner Peterson?
So I just wanted to try to figure out, like, for planning for the future, you know, Commissioner Hearn referenced that we're like playing catch up. So you all are working with DES because they have their CIP, they have their plans for keeping Arlington, you know, ready to absorb these fifty or hundred year storms that are going to start coming recently. So what we're proposing today, does that allow DES to achieve the CIP goals, to handle these fifty or hundred year storms? And, you know, we're just like getting out of their way, we're making sure zoning is getting out of the way to achieve the goals?
That's exactly what getting out of the way, that's the way I view this.
Paradigmically, yes.
Okay, and so do you, are you familiar enough with their plans that, like, okay, now we are going to be able to handle these hundred year storms? Or like, what what capacity are we getting? Slide, you know, that you mentioned, we're really not even at, we're we're at full capacity right now. And we know we're going to be developing more, we're approving the projects, we're looking at this metal, we're approving that. Or not necessarily, but we're on a path to potentially approve that. So I guess I'm just wondering, like, you know, what what are we going to actually be able to handle? What is DES saying, like, you know what, we're gonna, next time we have that giant flood, I live in California right now, like, the pictures are terrifying.
Yeah.
And so like, you know, the bridges got wiped out on love or run and how it took years to replace those, I think they're up now. So I guess I'm wondering, like, you know, what kind of disasters are we going to be able to avoid by, you know, these projects?
Sure, yeah, well, I think, I mean, again, the key point is is trying to, you know, remove some of these constraints. We do have, I mean, it's a longer term plan and, you know, Liz can feel free to jump in. You know, there's, it's it's going to be a number of years, I think, to, you know, fully design and then construct, you know, a lot of these improvements in some of these critical watersheds where we've had some of the challenges. So it's it's not something that we can kind of all, you know, complete. This year or next year, I mean, it's definitely a longer term.
It's a long term. And the ramp, we have a, we have an ongoing risk assessment and manage mitigation and management program, pop project. And that's ongoing and and we're just getting ready to do some public engagement on that. That'll address a little bit of it. But the main focus here was, it came up when we started doing some of these studies for the different watersheds that we were running square into the zoning ordinance. And so I think the what, you know, we can't even plan some of these things without, you know, a lot of zoning issues the way it stands today. So the purpose of this is to try to remove that obstacle. And we have other obstacles, but this is to remove the zoning obstacle.
Yeah, I mean, I'm a hundred percent on board. I want to remove whatever obstacles we have, I'd like to be able to speed up the process. We don't have to wait two, three months to go through all sorts of reviews that don't really add value to what we're trying to get done here. And with these projects being so expensive, the time value of money is just enormous.
Yeah, the longer it takes, the more.
It's just, yeah.
I appreciate that comment. I will sort of qualify that a little bit, that, you know, it is a little bit of being the balance of priorities.
Of course.
There's arts, there's DES, there's, you know. So I think we want to clear out of the way, but we also will make sure, you know, that we're also giving you, you know, input from the areas that we might not have been.
Thought of.
Radar. I think next steps for this committee, and I always try to figure this out. So we are going to make a recommendation at the planning commission, correct? That's what's being sort of brought to us. Do you essentially recommend that the county board adopt these changes?
That's, yes, all right. What we'll do, Commissioner Starley, we're gonna, we're gonna take the feedback. Clearly, we have some additional, we're we're gonna go back to the woodshed when it comes to the retaining wall, trying to reflect some of the feedback we've got from the commission and and to to pay a, not that we're not paying attention to it, to to really put our thinking caps on and see if we can create some more flexibility specificity on if an eight foot fence is being used for enclosure in one of our public spaces. Number one, we're we're following William White's good principles. We're we're keeping that that access and transparency, but we're not complicating and and we're not complicating the pedestrian experience. And so we think, I'm, I think we've got some ideas that we can generate to to try to bring some more specificity to that, for lack of a better word. So once, so once we do that, we're gonna, so we we will be actively working on that because we are in the early stages of putting, preparing for the February county board meeting. And so the next steps would be to have the the board authorize the manager to advertise this for public hearings. We'll we'll take everything that that you've read this tonight, as well as the conversation tonight. We should have some some updates to the language that we've been thinking about, we'll have that. And so so. And so, so presuming the board adopts that resolution, we would have this scheduled for your regular agenda at your March meetings, which I believe are.
They were just scheduled.
I believe you are there.
I have them in the memo.
March 6th or March 8th? Yeah, so you'd be, you'd be seeing at least me on one of those nights. Hopefully, my other colleagues will join me as well. Yeah, so that's, so that's, that's the next step in the process on this one.
Okay, I think, I think we've heard enough, is that enough? Did we wrap everything? Do you get some good feedback?
Mr. Chair, I do have a member of the public who would like to provide virtual comments.
Oh, great, okay, we do have a public speaker. All right, with that, let's wrap it up and give it to the public and comment.
Mr. Young, the floor is yours. You can turn, turn your camera on if you'd like.
Mr. Young, let's give you like a minute and a half, is that okay? This is going to be very quick. And, and sorry, I, I'm going to skip the camera for speed. I've listened with interest, thanks for the opportunity. I would just like for the county to remind people in talking about the increasing frequency and intensity of the precipitation events, that climate is driving this. Right, right now, the background mentions the increasing frequency and intensity, but there's no reference to the fact, this isn't a fluke. Climate is driving this. And so it's not going to go away anytime soon. I think it's worthwhile simply to remind people of that driving force. So that's really all I wanted to say, to, to mention, you know, that I'd, I'd rather that we be very explicit about that for the general public. So thank you very much, that's it for me.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mr. Young.
Appreciate you coming to our meeting. With that, unless there's anything else, thank you very much for being here. Thanks for the presentation, thanks for the great memo. I can throw it to Commissioner Darren.
Always, Nick, they're terrific.
Yeah, and hopefully all our comments were viewed in a positive light.
Very much so.
Let's be end of the, of the Shakespeare play.